Southwest looking Board of Education to order. We'd like to welcome our visitors both here and online. Would you like to join me for the Poet of Allegiance? Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore. Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. Do we have any public... okay. A motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. That passes. Presentation. Have a recognition of a retirement. Pam Holly. Yeah, that's why I put yours. Want to come on forward? The Board of Education would like to recognize Pam Holly for 11 years of service as a paraprofessional at Southwest looking local schools. She was very appreciated by her coworkers as evident by comments shared by Stephanie and Lauren to honor Pam. Pam Holly dedicated her time and energy each day helping support students and their individual needs. She was also able to find some positive in everything she did. Every day, she welcomed students with her warm smile. Her dedication and strong work ethic impacted several classrooms here at Southwest looking. We were blessed to have had the opportunity of working with such an amazing woman. We love you Pam. The Board would like to thank Pam for her service. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you.
I look in here and I see a lot of the principals and a lot of faces that I recognize. And it was wonderful working with everyone. It was my pleasure to work with such a wonderful staff and administration. And just the students in Southwest looking local schools. So, great career. I'm enjoying my retirement, however. Thank you all so much.
Congratulations.
All right. Number three, we have a discussion on our athletic facilities. I think we will start with, we've had several meetings, both in the boardroom and then a separate community meeting. We've had several different presentations and ideas. I think we'll start with Brian from Garmin Miller, maybe going back over some of the things that have been presented?
Yes.
If you can do that again for us?
Yes, I've got a PowerPoint prepared.
Perfect.
What it's going to do is it's going to go back all the way through the spring, what we first introduced. And then as it continued to expand with the inclusion of a field house and then the feedback that was given from that as well. So, we're kind of going to go through the timeline and then hopefully at the end, we can get to a resolution at some point here within the next month or so to move forward. So, moving on. Here's kind of the agenda to review the existing conditions and needs, wishes, and wants, and then review the options. If you recall, Lisa Marley, she gave a list to me for the needs, wishes, and wants. If you recall, because we're going to be moving the existing high school over to the new high school, we're going to be losing some of the facilities. And these were the facilities that were going to be affected. Home and visitor locker room, female locker room, male and female coaches offices with restrooms and showers, an athletic training room. And then above and beyond that, looking at the restrooms, concessions, and the bleachers that are currently at the high school football field. So, that's kind of where we're going to go. The first order that we did back in the spring is we looked at the existing facilities as a whole. And Mr. Janelle and I went through, we drove around the facility, took a lot of notes, a lot of photographs, just to kind of get an idea of where the facility might be located, how big does it need to be, et cetera. So, what we decided is that we were going to host a 6,000 square foot locker room complex on the visitor's side of the field. The purpose for that is there is talks about potentially moving that home side over to the visitor's side, which would now put the locker rooms on the home side. So, again, looking at a 6,000 square foot facility that would house those items that we talked about with the locker rooms, coaches' offices, and training room. Access directly onto the field for the visiting team and the home team. Next, we looked at the concession area, okay, and what we can do with the existing concession area and the toilet rooms that are currently there, they're non-ADA. So, we looked at that. So, the proposal was is let's put an addition onto the back of the existing concessions with restrooms on either side, expand the existing concession area because it's a little small now for storage, and create some new concrete out in front, and renovate the existing concession building. So, that was another option. And then the third option was to, again, bring the home side bleachers over to the visitor's side adjacent to the locker room facility, and then just keeping the existing where they're at. So, those were, that's what was presented in the spring. And as we continue to discuss, we talked about bringing in a field house. Okay, what would that look like? And what would it look like if we brought the concessions, the restrooms, the tickets, a field house, or if we brought this all under one facility? And so, we started to create the field house option. This is a 31,000 square foot facility with your locker rooms, concessions, offices, toilet rooms, all in the front here, and then a 17,000 square foot field house behind it, which would house a basketball court, batting cages, and a three-lane track. The next slide, we came and we introduced the pavilion. There's currently an existing pavilion that's out there at the football field. So, we said, oh, if we place it in at the end zone area, that's going to encompass that existing pavilion. So, we generated new space for the pavilion. That was another option here. That brought it up to 34,000 square feet. And then flipping it was the next opinion. Let's flip it, let's get the open area pavilion out on the, by the home side, because if we switch the home side to the other side of the field, it'll bring that pavilion to the home side. And again, at 34,000 square feet. So, again, it's going to be encompassing the tickets, it's going to be the concessions. This particular option, we do have a small concessions that will help feed the soccer fields that are out there. And but other than that, it's, it meets in this particular option, it exceeds what is needing to be replaced with the high school moving out to the new building, which is really the field house that's holding around. So, where are we going to place it? There were a couple of options. We looked at locating it here on the existing tennis courts, and then looking at the option of putting it at the end zone, calling it an end zone building. So, those options came here. The arrow here is where you would enter, and you would still keep that wall there that has the signage, this keeps the pavilion where it's at. And then we would look at doing some renovation or whatever we would want to do to that existing concessions, because now the concessions is within the building. Okay, these tennis courts would then have to be relocated. And we talked about it at the last meeting, that would be roughly $480,000 to relocate that, barring the site work from that equation. The next option was to put it at the end zone. Again, you would come through the gates here, some new concrete. This particular option, you can see the existing pavilion would be having to taken down and put under the new facility. And then the third option is just marrying it like we showed with the pavilion over on this side, which would then be on the home side once that gets replaced. So, that was the option that was presented there. So, how it lays on the overall site. You can see that we have the first option locating over here by the tennis courts. We have some additional parking shows, kind of a master plan in the future to get a little bit of additional parking and moving the tennis courts to this location here if we didn't want to move them out to the new high school site. And then we show some existing parking and circulation over here by the high school. And then the other option with it being at the end zone, again, showing some additional parking here, some parking here, these fields would potentially be relocated as part of a master plan option. So, this is what was reviewed last month at the, I will call it the community meeting. And this is the same presentation that we've given at that time, nothing's changed from that point. We just wanted to get it in front of the full board to get your feedback and get some direction with how we might want to proceed.
We wanted to, we had included the opportunity as part of this presentation to allow open conversation. So, if there are, which is not normally part of the board, regular board meeting, but it is available at this time. So, if there's anybody that has anything that they want to contribute to this conversation, this is the time to do that. But we will want you to come up and talk into the microphone. So, if there's anybody that has anything to say, you are more than welcome to do that with any comments. Don't, yeah, don't all jump up at once.
I'm Mike Jellison, the softball coach at the high school. And my, we've been in several meetings, community meetings, and then talked about the idea of the field house. And I think that since this I have as a coach, I've talked to the other 17, 18 high school coaches, is that all coaches would love a field house of some sort to help our activities and it would boost our program, grow the cycle from the community, it would just draw people in and add to our athletic complex. We would just, would like to make sure it's done right and like that every coach has an opportunity to benefit from the facility. So, if we look at the field facility, we can see basketball. As a softball coach, I love the four cages and the pitching tunnel is great for me, but is it help all 18, 19 sports that we have? And how can every coach benefit from it? And we just want to make sure that it's done right and it's not a patchwork where we've talked about the location, the parking, all the different stuff that has to go into it. Just make sure that it's not, we're not saying that we don't. I would love to, I would love to have a field house for my program, all the programs. You know, as a parent in the district and a coach in the district, it would be fantastic. I just would hope that it was done right, whether if we put together a committee and whatever the situation would be, make sure that it's done right and that all the coaches have an opportunity to benefit from it in some way. But if maybe some of the programs are getting access in the new high school that other coaches won't have access to, we work that way, whatever the committee needs to come up with, just, you know, we'd love to have it just be done right so that all the programs can benefit from it. So, I don't want to ask. All right? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. And I have some questions too, because we are on a limited timeframe in what, in at least a portion of what has to be completed. So, when you think in regards to that, we have to have something completed by August of 2021. So, with that in mind.
I don't, I don't think that, if you, if you say, hey, this is what the budget is, whether that budget is 2 million, 5 million, 7 million, whatever the budget is, get a committee together and say, this is how much we have to spend. We want to spend this money. What can we do? And if that means that some coaches might not benefit from it, and they might have to stay in the new high school, whatever the situation might be, maybe we don't get a full basketball field, we have a place for the kids to run, so the track doesn't have to run in the hallways in the winter. So, just so that we have places and we can work together, the coaches can sit down and work together about and make it work. We just want to make sure that it's not patchwork and pieces here and pieces here, that the coaches have a plan. And I don't think it'll take very long if you let the coaches know and people know, this is what we have to spend, the coaches can sit down and we can figure it out, you know? Just let us know who's going to be on that committee and we can make that happen.
You have some questions?
Yeah, I think that I heard a lot of the answer to it. And Mike, you had mentioned a lot of times, make it right. So, what I'm hearing though is at this particular time, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, is maybe just meet the minimums of what it takes to replace what we're losing in the high school, but then get a group of coaches together, maybe some community members, and decide what an actual field house would be that benefits as many coaches as possible. Or my, I don't want to put words in your mouth, trying to get some direction here.
No, I'm not saying, my thought is, is this, I've been, my wife's been in the district 40 years. And I'm not saying that we want to wait, because if we wait, we know that that might be 10, 20, you know, how long, how long does wait, what does wait mean?
Right.
I don't want to wait. If we can do it now, let's do it now. I'm not saying we need to wait and push this back one, two, three, four years. I'm not saying we need to do that either. I'm saying if we can figure it out, let's figure it out. Let's do it right. You know, that's just all I'm asking. And maybe we get a group of people together that come from different perspectives and you let us know, hey, if we're going to go this route, that's what we're going to do, just let us know what the number is and see if we can make something work. And that would be, you know, my suggestion on that.
Okay, Brian, you have some approximate numbers, correct?
Yeah, some approximates of, you know, just being a little facility that we show versus having the field house attached to it. You know, because of the budget being what it is, that's why the size of it is, the way it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Personally, I, from my standpoint, I see replacing what you currently have with the locker room facility, potentially adding restrooms to that facility, okay? Renovating the concession building. And then to his point of, let's figure out a field house, let's get together, let's, let's get the input that's needed, let's decide what all needs to be in this facility, and then let's see how big that facility needs to be, and that will determine what that cost is. It might be way more than what is affordable.
Yeah.
So, at that point, at least, you went through the exercise of saying, we tried to capture all 18 sports, we were able to capture X amount, it's now this big, and now it's, you know, it's way more than what we can afford. Now, you justify scaling it back down to potentially, yeah, sports that you fit into the specific.
Go ahead.
Can I just say something to what you just said along with what Mr. Jellison said? He used the word patchwork. So, if we build what we need and then go to the drawing board to build what we want from a field house perspective, I fear a bunch of little buildings like that don't match popping up all over the place. To me, that's very patchworky. That's not a word, I understand that, but that's...
Yeah, that is, that is my concern as well. That's my biggest concern right now is building here, building there, building, we have, I mean, we already have a campus that's kind of building here, a little building there, a little, and that's been my biggest concern all along, are these little buildings popping up?
And I'm not trying to put words in your mouth either, but when you say patchwork, that's what I thought what you maybe meant.
I just meant, I don't want to put something in a location just because it's easier. I don't want to, I want to, we have a space where it would make, look nice, and it would make sense to put it there, let's put it there. If that means that the locker rooms and bathrooms have to be somewhere different, that's okay, because let's put the, if we're going to do an athletic field house or a complex, let's put it where it fits best for everybody to use, and let's not put it in the location because it's easier to, financially easier. It might be easier to build it onto locker rooms and restrooms than it would be to put it in a separate location with more feasibility.
Okay, so I have a question.
Okay.
Here's, because really, no, the nice place for, to be, might be directly behind the home stadium, which would in fact take out the existing varsity baseball field, right? Which, hold on, I'm not, I'm not being ugly, I promise. Right? I mean, so, which in fact would then require us to build another varsity baseball field.
Right.
But could solve some other problems, because you're running into the issue of every time there's a track meet, you're getting sent down to the west side of Columbus to have a game. So, so maybe, do you see what I'm saying? So, if we're thinking ahead, not that I want to take out the varsity field, that's not what I'm saying, but you see what I'm saying? So, that's why I'm wondering, you know, can we think ahead on some of this stuff?
Kenny, did you, are you talking baseball field or softball?
I'm talking about the softball field.
Okay.
I'm sorry, softball, softball. I'm talking about your field.
Behind the current, if we built it in the, where the softball field is currently set, it'd be somewhere near.
Correct, yeah.
If we built it there, the tennis courts or wherever, I don't think any of the coaches are going to get upset.
Right.
We just have to, that place is going to have to be replaced.
Right, exactly.
I think we're all willing to do whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Necessary to make this work.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't see anybody, that's why we're just going to get a group together and find out the location and what we can and can't do. But it's like one thing you put on the tennis court, that's, that's a half a million to put those somewhere else.
Put a new one, right.
Put them somewhere else.
Exactly.
You know, relocating the softball field is not going to be cheap either.
No.
You know, none of that stuff's going to be cheap, so we've got to find what's feasible and what makes the most sense.
Right. Right.
Well, thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you.
My name is Jake Keener, I'm the head football coach. You know, just piggybacking off of what Coach Jellison said, I think there's definitely a committee that should be put together after we figure out, you know, the parameters of this. But I think number one is, you know, the bleachers are going to be gone or not passable in the next one or two years. And I know, I've talked to Donnie, I know this directly relates to his, the baseball stadium, but you know, we've sat down and we've talked, if we're going to end up, the idea in the next two, three years is to flip the home stands. Let's think about flipping the home stands and then maybe putting this locker room facility and training rooms and all these things underneath the stands, even if we have to take 15, 20 feet out of the outfield, that'll allow him to have accessibility straight to the locker rooms from the right hand, right field. But I think the biggest thing with the field house is, you know, what is our vision down the road? You know, we're growing, we all know that. I mean, what we said, I think you said, Mr. Janelle, that we're the third growingest population school-wise in Central Iowa.
Last year, we were the third fastest in Central Iowa.
So, I mean, you know, look at the facility that we're thinking about putting in as a field house, you know? Again, I know this is mock-up and drawings and, you know, I think accessibility is going to be huge when building this field house. And again, I agree with Coach Jellison, I don't think this is something that we just sit down and do because we have the timeline of the locker rooms. I think the locker rooms should be do, should be done, and obviously that's a thing we need done. If we're looking in the next two years, bringing stands in anyway, let's pull the stands in and let's put in what we need to be put in right now, and then, you know, later down the line, maybe a year, two years from now, or if we get on it earlier, that's, accessibility, I think, is huge for a field house. You know, we have, we do have that spot also right behind the middle school right now where the field is, and that's a spot as well. You know, but I think the closer you guys get it to, or we get it to the high school with parking and all that, accessibility for basketball, for any of the teams that are going to be going indoors during inclement weather, you know? I think that would be appropriate, definitely.
Did you just say, like, behind the high school?
Behind the high school, that is, right now.
Oh, okay.
Where the, the band, the band field, right now where, you know, biddy league and things are up there. I think we have, we have room up there, but even if we got the...
I was just clarifying, because...
Yeah. So, I mean, is the field house driving this vision, or are we talking about what we need right now? I mean, if we're looking at what we need right now, if we want to do the concession renovations, let's do the concession renovations and get all this stuff that we need right now knocked out. I mean, I think the biggest thing is, is obviously locker rooms and bathrooms at the stadium that we look at right now. I mean, we all know the bathrooms are an issue, and it doesn't matter if it's a football or track, I mean, whatever we have over there, the bathrooms are an issue. So, and then especially that backing up into the concession stands. You know, even if we, and I know talking to Mr. Schindler and talking with him, I, they're okay with even renovating the concessions themselves as long as the bathrooms get off of that property, like that area. So, if we put the, you know, bathrooms made in with the locker rooms, I think we'd be good there. But again, I mean, if we're going to put the home stands over there in the next two years, let's get that done and we can put everything underneath that we need. So, and then we can also, I mean, there's also other ideas that we could go off of that. So, the field house, you know, obviously when, you know, I think of a field house and everybody using it and being able to use it, I'm thinking three to four courts, four to five lane track, not a three lane track, but you know, indoor track and field. I mean, the, the days of going in, in and out of the hallways during the winter is definitely an issue. You know, you can't do proper training down there, you can't do proper block starts, you can't put spikes on, you just can't do those things. And you know, the field house would be great for even with pole vault and, you know, composite floor is going to last for 20, 25 years anyway. It's going to be something that, you know, the maintenance obviously is going to be there, but it's not going to be crazy like it would be like putting in a new turf field or something like that. So, that would be my thought. So, and again, I think the committee thing is definitely probably a great idea, just, you know, who's, who's it involved? And, you know, obviously the board members, administrators, and coaches that are going to be directly affected by the moving of, A, the locker rooms, and B, the, put it in a field house. And I think we should hit every sport we can. I mean, if we need to put a weight room in there, resting room, I mean, let's think about what we can do. And again, like, as Brian said, you know, let's, let's think about these things that we want and then scale it back from what we have. So, any questions? You guys?
Not, I don't have any questions for Jake.
Okay.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So, Brian, you said August 2021. When would be like the absolute latest? We'd be able to make a decision and have something ready for August 2021? Or does that depend on...
Go ahead, Dick. There's two answers to that.
Okay.
If it's a 6,000 to 8,000 square foot locker room complex, we would want to start construction next summer, even in the fall. If it's going to be a field house attached to it, then we want to get started in the spring.
Of next year?
And that decision, that facility would, we'd have that decision early in December for us to be able to get documents put together that, that would be able to get started probably in the spring. We did a facility two years ago, it was 36,000 square feet, it was right at 11 months to get done. So, we want it ready for the summer, we want to get started in late spring. I don't know if, I mean, the construction side of things, would have anything more to add to the construction, the building, the 12 months?
It would depend too, if you're going to do a masonry structure, a pre-engineered building, wood structure, metal structure.
Okay.
All of them have different timeframes for what would be, you know, one of the biggest, I don't know if it's going to, would be an obstacle or not, but is your utilities and making sure the tracking through the various areas to get the proper utilities out there to the site.
I have a question. Somebody said one or two more years for the bleachers. Is, does... I have a question. Somebody said one or two more years for the bleachers. It, is, does that mean that it's going to be condemned and we can no longer use them? Is that what you meant by the one or two years?
That's the way I understood it.
Lisa hasn't had them inspected each year, should be really sure.
So I'm asking.
Yes.
So it sounds like that's a priority then?
Yes, it is. I have them inspected yearly. Um, and this past fall, it's, last time I had them inspected, they passed them, the company passed them, not begrudgingly, but they said that there's a lot of work that we need to do, but yes, they would pass for this year. But if we were to ask them to come back out in a year or two, obviously with wear and tear, they would not be passed.
Yeah.
Unless we put some serious work into them.
So, that, that being said, it sounds like that's going to be something we're going to have to focus on here pretty sooner than later.
Which is the visitor.
Can we build a locker room underneath a bleachers that have already been built? I mean, can we build it that way to plan on putting something in the future if we had to?
Well, it would be a completely different type of construction if you're going to play for, uh, bleachers underneath it. You, like the bleachers you have out there right now, it's just a framework.
Right, so
If you were to want to put bleachers underneath it, it would
We would have to build it knowing that we're either going to build it so we can put the locker room underneath or do it all in once.
I, I would recommend doing it all at once.
Yeah.
If you wanted to do that.
Right.
What would the cost increase be?
In the bleachers?
Uh huh.
Um, I can give that to you.
But it's
It would be significant.
Significant. And with our budget
Right now, I, I don't know, the, the ones that you had, um,
No, I, I have a quote for just flip flopping home and away.
Yeah.
And
Using the same bleachers that we have presently?
Or no, new bleachers?
It was new, okay.
Um, making a twenty-two fifty, uh, all, make visitor home, reserve seating press box. And my quote was almost six hundred thousand dollars, but that did not include, um, a, anything underneath of it.
But, but flipping home and away is a want, that's not a need. Flipping bleachers, bleachers is a need, but flipping them is, is, you see what I'm, yes.
Flipping them, yes.
Flipping them is a want, needing the visitor's side is a need. That, those are, those are two different things, financially speaking, right?
But my understanding would be if we did that, if we did flip them, we would buy new bleachers for what is now the visitor's side. That would be home, but the present home bleachers would stay the, stay there.
So that's what we would do. We would buy fancy bleachers for the other side
Right.
And then call them home and then
Correct.
Gotcha. So we really wouldn't like be moving stuff around.
That would, that would also allow us to host a lot bigger tournaments.
Gotcha. More money. Okay, right. Thank you.
Now, I, 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 you know, when you share that seven thousand square, the six thousand square foot locker room facility, you know, the cost of that, compared to the cost of even putting them underneath the bleachers, uh, you know, it could potentially be comparable. I, I, I don't really know, we'd have to go back and look at it.
Okay.
Um, it's not going to be substantial because you're still bringing all your utilities over there. It's just, I don't know what the cost of the bleachers would be because you're not, you're not putting up aluminum bleachers at this point. You're building the bleachers,
Right.
You know, off of steel, you know, the steel structure, et cetera, it's completely different. If you recall that first presentation I gave, I showed an example, it's just, it's completely different.
Right.
So, the home bleachers now would be good for away bleachers, but they're not good for home bleachers?
No.
No, they're fine for, they're fine for home.
Right now, our present visitor bleachers are the ones that are bad?
Oh, I thought it was the home, the one, oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought it was the home ones that had one or two years. It's the visitors, okay, that, that makes difference.
Brian, so if we were to do a facility like underneath the bleachers, like a structured building with the bleachers on it, that price increases, which therefore takes funding away from whatever we would want to build field type house-wise in the future.
Correct.
Significantly.
We have a budget of, of this for athletics, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Say that again, Kathy, it would take
I'm just, if we were to build the locker room facilities with bathrooms, I would hope, underneath the bleachers on the new home side, currently the visitor's side, would, the cost is potentially significantly higher, which would take away from whatever leftover budget we have to build this dream fieldhouse.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So that fieldhouse potentially, if we want it to be what everybody actually wants,
Then it's going to be
It's going to take longer to get that money back.
Yes.
So it wouldn't be
That wouldn't
As close to a couple of years down the road, maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
I don't know if this helped, but I'm just going to throw this out there. Um, since I've been here forty years, I've been budgeting and, um, revenue wise. Uh, I, I, I can tell you, that's why I've really been serious about looking at the price and how much it is to flip flop home and away. And I can tell you that the athletic department, uh, probably will be able to fund, uh, a half. Uh, flip, uh, just bleachers, I'm not talking fieldhouse, I'm not talking locker rooms, whatever. Um, I created, we created revenue from selling the digital advertisement, went to the board and it paid off. I believe I have over a hundred thousand dollars already paid off of two hundred and something because businesses have, have paid, I myself have been selling advertising, um, programs, took over the programs this year, that was a pretty big, significant revenue for us. Um, I can honestly tell you that I feel that the athletic department probably would have about two hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I've also been talking towards flipping, yes.
By like next year?
Yes, towards bleachers, yes.
That's, that's tough.
I also have to talk to some businesses as well, some corporates, um, to possibly, uh, pitch in. So I wanted to throw that out. This was even before the fieldhouse and all that, this was just my plan, flip flopping and how I was going to do it, and it was one of the reasons why I went big with the advertising and the video board. I knew it was revenue for us.
Can I be a party pooper? Just, just a quick comment about that, you have an athletic turf that's going to need to be replaced.
Right, that's right.
So either that comes out of the athletic budget or it's going to come out of the board money.
Right.
Unless the boosters end up raising funds again, which I don't know if they'll do.
No, probably not.
So I don't mean to kill that, but you have to look at the bigger picture and, 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 and just to chime in while I'm being the bummer is that, um, you know, I think Rick, who can speak for himself, is, he kind of gave us a budget, uh, when we first began, and I think that's why Brian designed what he, he could design. So if we're still thinking of having a, a fieldhouse built at the same time, I, I, I just don't know that we have that money. Unless we take it from what I think is going to become more important and more, um, visible in later discussions, even tonight about our renovations to our, our academic spaces and things that we're, we're undergoing right now. So, if, I'm, I'm going to reemphasize that we probably should take care of what we're losing in the high school, uh, when it's being converted to a middle school. And again, I think the bleachers are, are an important thing to take a look at, but she's also brought up that tennis courts need work.
Right.
So again, you know, you can spend that money there, but we're going to have to find other money to fix the things that we've already talked about in all these different community meetings. So, uh, I mean, I, I understand the desire to try to get the coaches together, I think that right now could happen, but I just don't believe, Rick, please help me, you're the money guy, that we have money to build anything beyond what you've seen.
That's up to the board. They have options to base, like I said, there is options to go wherever you want to, but we can have way payback.
Right.
VI, which could come out of Joe's fund. And Carl, Bob says, you know, we still have three, four billion renovations and Eric will be asking you for about one point three billion dollars tonight.
Yeah, yeah, this isn't a good
And we haven't even got to the high school yet.
And then we got to the high school renovation to middle school, we have Tassler, Kirkers now. So, and that's, to me, that's the biggest concern, is having enough money. Right now, we don't have enough money, I don't think, to all the renovations. We're probably going to have to borrow money so we can complete our renovations. And I foresee tagging that on whatever we decide to for an athletic facility or whatever.
Oh, in my mind, if we're borrowing money to complete renovations, I can, in good conscience, consider a fieldhouse.
I don't see how we're going to get around it, can I'm talking about, we have, we have one, we have about one point six million dollars right now in interest, and we were asked for one point three for it now. And we haven't even got to high school.
Right.
And right now, they all been running at least two million dollars budget. If you do that number, that's six million dollars, you have to high school, Tassler, Kirkers, that we're going to have to come up with. Unless we plan to take it out of the Joe fund, which we could, but it's going to be that much faster for any operating money.
Right.
So
So that is a big concern, is you have to bring it down with the whole picture, not just to do, I think we need to do what we need right now. But I, I mean, I, to my opinion, if we put off the fieldhouse, I don't know if we'll ever get done, I'm honest with you.
Right. Well, yeah, that's my biggest concern, because we don't know who the board members will be in the future, we don't, you know, obviously our enrollment is going crazy.
Right.
Going to need a new school somewhere sometime.
An option always could be to build it at the locker room and go out for bond issue for the athletic facility, to see what the community supports or not, for their fieldhouse. Like I said, Logan just built one, they're building one, that was nine, ten million dollars for their fieldhouse.
Where did they get the money for that?
I don't know where you have. So it's a six lane track, they have four basketball courts in it, they're going to run it out, definitely get money, well, that's a nine, ten million dollar facility, that's probably what we need. I mean, Logan's, we're probably about the same size as Logan, not a little bit. So you're talking about nine or ten million dollars just for the fieldhouse itself. And it has locker rooms and weight room and some other stuff too, but it's probably not unreasonable to think seven, eight million dollars, would you think, Brian?
Yeah, I, yeah. I would, I would say you're probably in the nine to ten million.
Yeah, just for the fieldhouse itself, not, yeah, so
If you're going to hit ten, twelve, fifteen sports.
And, and to throw another issue into the, I mean, uh, Jake quoted me tonight, uh, we're the third fastest growing district in the, in central, um, Columbus and we're going to need additional space sooner than later. And I'm talking elementary space as we continue to grow. We're going to have the ability to add on to like the high school, but that's another four to five million dollars. So, again, I'm not, I, I feel like I'm the bummer again, but I'm just trying to be very, very honest. There's a big picture here, there's a lot going on. And I think that I'm here, what I tried to paraphrase from Mike, I didn't mean to burst as well, is that, you know, we need to get the, we need to build what is right. And, uh, we need to get the coaches' input on that. Um, and I just sensed from the previous meeting and maybe a little bit tonight that that's not the fieldhouse that they see. And that was the fieldhouse I thought that Rick kind of gave numbers and he's exactly right, board can go as high as they lie. But I just feel that that might get us into some other areas of, um, uh, trying to find some revenue.
Yeah.
And we're going to have, you know, education, you know, we hate to go back to the voters too frequently.
Can I ask a question? I'm taking a couple steps back. When will the turf need replaced?
Um, we're looking at probably six more years, five, six more years of it.
And how long, how often does the track need resurface? I know we just did it like two and a half years ago.
Uh, it may be about the same time, maybe about
Okay. Thanks.
And we can do patchwork, you know, to it, uh, every couple of years, but actually resurface it like we did.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we did the locker room with the bleachers, or I'm sorry, the stands with the bleachers, or, I can't talk tonight. If we did the stands with locker rooms underneath it, um, that's significantly cheaper obviously than the fieldhouse option, right? Okay. So the way I see it, our absolute needs are, we need locker rooms and we absolutely need some bleachers. Those are non-negotiables.
And bathrooms.
And bathrooms.
Well, your current bathrooms are
Nasty.
They're, they're
They're bad.
But you could, you could have events out there and still use the bathrooms, they, they're not going to be in them.
Okay.
They're pretty close.
They should, they're non-ADA compliant, but it's grandfathered in. I, I just, I want to make sure that you're aware.
Okay, so I guess in my mind, where, where I went, and this is just me speaking, um, especially knowing with the educational renovations that need to come up and we know that we're going to need money for that. In my mind, the fieldhouse right now is off the table. It's a nice wish list, it's great to talk about, maybe we can fundraise, maybe whatever, but right now for me, that seems to be off the table. And I kind of, the three things that I've kind of laid out here, I, to me, so we don't do that patchwork that you were talking about and things all over, to me, it doesn't make sense to put up a building of just lockers because now we have another extra building. Whereas if we put the locker room underneath the bleachers, you have one standing structure. And that takes away from the patchwork and that also gives us space in the future to maybe use that for whatever we would want. Number two, um, if we move the restrooms out of the concession area, then I think the boosters would be happy because they would have the additional space they needed. Especially if we put those restrooms in this new bleacher building, or whatever you want to call it. And then, um, number three, yes, we do have to do something with the tennis courts. I liked the idea of moving them closer to the new high school, but, um, you know, I just think with number one and number two, we've got to, um, we've got to address the locker room, we have to address, sorry, we have to address the locker room and the restrooms, thank you. So, that's just me.
I'll piggyback on that, and I agree with you, John, I think that's, that's our direction right now.
And I'd, I'd rather have a nice structured bleacher. So we can get more tournament, more anything here and build more revenue.
Brian, will it be big enough to have all of the needs plus maybe some like storage for, you know, football pads, like we talked at the
Is that like automatic?
The size of, uh, locker rooms that you need, I believe, I don't, I don't lay it out, but I, it's going to be really, really tight to get it.
That's what I was afraid of.
Because the minimum without the restrooms, six thousand square feet. So, it's going to be, it's going to be really tight, but we can lay it out and, and see where we're at.
I think the other potential bonus for this is less middle schoolers underneath the bleachers running around, just say.
Reach.
We can, we can, we can build outside of the, of what we call the perimeter of the bleachers.
Okay.
And you can build her on back.
Okay.
Okay.
To make it happen, but we have a baseball field there, we've got a stadium there, we've got this, you know, we have to look into all that too. So, you know, they'll take a study, that's the reason why we're, we're doing this study, just for this reason, so.
Okay.
Uh, Sheeran and I will get to work and, and see if we can do that, whatever the look like.
I would think if we pull the restrooms out, that would then give the boosters the opportunity to do what they want to do, renovations in the concession stands. That could be up to them at that point.
And you'll have a group that's happy about the pavilion.
Correct.
Right, Brian, what, by combining the two, how much more expensive that's going to be versus two separate? The bleachers and locker room being separate versus together, how much more expensive would that be, ballpark percentage?
We'll have to look at that, but it, it will be more expensive. Because like Lisa said, you could get the bleachers for six hundred, but, you know, you need to include yourself, all that stuff, so it's going to be more. The six thousand square foot building, that's just say two hundred dollars a square foot, you know, you can eat that there, so. The facility that we're thinking to do the bleachers and this, that, and that, that's good. I'm very positive. But, again, it was about
But significantly cheaper than the fieldhouse option.
Yes.
Okay.
Or less expensive?
Yeah.
Kevin McCarlin, one of the baseball staff, and just to speak on this, we've talked about it, and what you guys have been saying about extra buildings being built. If everything got built under the bleachers and was one, I think it'd be much better look for the campus. And then also, it would give us a very unique baseball field. We've talked about this before.
Oh, the wall.
Would give us the Boston Green Monster, which shows a Red Sox fan, I'm sorry. But it would, it would give us something special
Yeah.
To our baseball field also. And I think by doing this, even if you encroach someone to the baseball field and you take it away, but you go higher with the wall, it's still very playable, it's still very doable, and it's going to give more square footage to the locker rooms and everything. And you could even put a door or something for access for the baseball team. I just think that it is probably the right option and that, but you could, you could encroach on the field and we still make things work with the existing baseball field.
Good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add a couple things. About a week or so ago, we, uh, we met all the coaches, I think we had, probably eight or nine, we had a pretty substantial group come in in the morning, and we met, and it was a pretty honest conversation. I think it's tough for guys to be I think it's tough for guys to be honest, you know, in different settings. Uh, these coaches realize, I mean, you're not gonna get everything you want. But I think one thing we talked about is, you know, the importance of, and we're going in the right direction, but we still need a strategic plan. I mean, we came up with a seven year plan for what we're gonna do with the schools. I think we could come up with a long-term plan with what we're gonna do with athletic facility.
Yes.
And I think, you know, we, we know what our needs are, but hey, we're gonna eventually have a fieldhouse. But where are we gonna locate it and things like that? You know, you talk about studies and everything else. I think that needs to be done. Let's have a plan. And then we can talk about, hey, how we're gonna fund it and how we're gonna implement it at different stages. And I think the coaches, we talked a lot about that. Uh, and there's, and they know they're gonna have, they, they can't have everything they want. But for the good of the cause, I think that's the way we talked about going.
No, no, I, I appreciate, we appreciate that very much. I think we received a letter from the rugby program that said, you know, this is what we're interested in. And it was perfect, you know? It was like, this is not needs, but this is wants and we use this field for this and we use this field for this and. Yeah. So you know that campus wise, this is, these are important places and, you know, so.
But I think, you know, long-term.
Absolutely.
This is gonna be the first thing, this will be next. And then as long as we know where it's going.
Right. You're not gonna put up a little building on top of something that's.
Do you have the direction you need?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
We'll, we'll get moving on that.
What are you doing still here? Get to work.
So you would still want like a final decision probably by December then for this to get rolling?
Yeah, it would be nice, but your house is gonna be off the table.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian.
I'm John Jarvis. I teach at a high school. I'm a coach, cross-country swimming and track. Um, and I agree, you know, with what we've said, you know, I think our, our needs, we need locker rooms and we need restrooms. A thought that came into my mind and I popped it off the can just a few minutes ago, um, and I don't know if this is even possible, so I figured bringing it up. If we were to build a new stadium at the new property, we, we could start over and do it the way we want it. And, you know, if we'd have to put more turf in, but that would probably prolong the life of the turf, the current field. We'd also have two tracks where our middle school could practice, where there's not 200 kids on the track at one time. But, you know, if it costs, you know, five million, I don't even know what it costs. But, you know, if it's five million instead of three for the extra two million, we're doubling our facilities. Um, and I don't know if that's even feasible with the land that we have. Just something that came into my mind that I thought I'd bring up. But, you know, as long as you leave me grass to run on, I'll be happy. Things get moving around, we'll move. But just leave somewhere with grass. We're good. So thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want me to comment on that or?
You can.
I was just gonna, I mean, that, that's something we really looked into, moving the facilities over to the new site. But I think we, as a board, discovered that terraforming the land over on that new site, specifically on that south, I guess southwest section of our land was very, very expensive to get something level. Now, there is land that we own closer to refugee that might be a little more suitable, but that's putting them a little further away from the high school. So it is definitely doable out there, but there'll be substantial numbers that we'll have to come up with to terraform the land.
Right. And that's what I just, I had no idea.
We're gonna try to squeeze things like diamonds. We've got a couple of practice fields that are gonna go behind each of the elementaries. We're trying to squeeze things over there, but just putting a full stadium, we just didn't feel at this time we could fit it in with, with the finances that we have. But it is something, if, you know, if Mike brought up a good thing, if it's a seven-year plan, if we're just meeting the needs now, we're gonna need to have locker rooms there anyways. So it, it could be something they can decide to do a little bit later. I think it's a great idea. So something they need to look into.
Good, everybody. All right. How about a presentation by Garman Miller? Again.
We gotta do that. No, we're in the middle school first. Actually, yes.
Okay, well, good evening. So for the FEDNA renovation project, uh, this is an overview of the, of the building. The main entrance is here and the classroom wing's here, here and here with the media center, gym and cafeteria. So as we've talked at previous meetings, we're in the schematic design phase, so the very first phase, uh, and working through, um, what the assessment is from the OFCC from the state and what they set our budgets also. And so we're trying to work within our budgets and trying to fit everything in. And, uh, so we have, uh, the scope of the project is essentially, uh, the existing ceilings would be removed and the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all that technology would all be updated above the ceiling and then a new ceiling would be put in. Uh, we have just a limited amount of, these were originally, these four rooms were originally kindergarten rooms. So we're gonna leave those or convert those back into kindergarten rooms with, uh, very little work as far as moving walls and that kinda thing. We are going to add one additional kindergarten room in this location, um, and put in two special education rooms with a restroom. And then the rooms along this side would be as they are now. The, we've looked at several different options. I've got pricing for different things, but the office area, those walls would remain the same. And then we also looked at the potential of, could we afford to, uh, put some overhead doors or some openings in between the cafeteria and the gym to make that? And I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to afford that, uh, but we did look at that cost. On the exterior of the building, we'll be addressing some of the cracking of the brick, um, that's occurred over the years. And then also with, uh, site work, we'll be addressing some of the pavement and some of the sidewalks. So, um, we do have the budget issue that we're gonna discuss here shortly. But just wanted to give you an update as to, as to where we were.
Nice. We line up the cutters. Oh, did I say that out loud?
One of the things we asked Kurt to do is to try to give us as many classrooms as we could because we're obviously a growing district. So when we added that kindergarten room with the bathroom, we added that. We wanted to have a second one across the hall, but the expense is probably gonna be too high. But we have that room and there's bathrooms in that at the end of the hallway, as most people know. Uh, so we are trying to gear up for six classrooms, I believe, at eighth grade level.
Right.
Uh, and again, that building's being designed for right around 425, 450 kids.
And it's grades K through three. So all the, all the rooms are essentially the same, but this would be the kindergarten and special education wing. This would be first grade where we have six classrooms. And then second, third would be in this wing, where we have six for each grade level.
Art music would stay right where they're at?
Yes.
The flooring and all that would stay?
Flooring would stay. Uh, we did have, uh, recently had our hazardous material testing comeback that said everything was fine. Uh, but we did fear that we would have to remove flooring and have an expense there, but we don't need to do that. So, and again, as budget allows, if there is some areas where we could add some, add some flooring, we could potentially look at that.
Have we looked at any, um, like playground equipment and whatnot?
Yeah, we do have budget for playground and, um, so we'll be working on that also.
That's not ready quite yet. Okay.
Hey, John, we, we've set aside about 90,000 for that building. The four or five has about 160, right? Rick, uh, set aside an L of five for a soft, um, uh, basically, uh, for all students to have equal access to. Yes. Uh, we haven't decided yet on whether or not we're gonna keep some of the other playground equipment that will all be looked at, but, you know, the teachers wanted to have as many swings as they could. We wanna make sure that it's accessible for all children. Uh, so that's been, that was put in in some of the L of fives. So we've been working with a separate group on that. But we're, we're right now wishful thinking for the different equipments, pieces that we're gonna get on that anyways. But I wanted to let you know, we do have a soft surface area.
All right.
And hard, hard surface area too.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
I do wanna note, before that disappears, you can notice there's not a whole lot of changes in what Rick already mentioned. So as we talk about that building later and some of the cause, I mean, we really aren't making it a Taj Mahal as Roger just went to. So we are keeping within, uh, you know, the general look of that building. But there are some needs that building needs to have.
Go to the high school. Okay, here's the, the Lockins Memorial renovation, here's an update, uh, where we're at right now. We're currently, uh, in schematic design as well. Uh, we're gonna be submitting the documents here in the next few weeks for the schematic design. Uh, here's an overall view of the site. Uh, one of the items is we have roughly 1.3 million dollars, I believe it is, in site work to help with the circulation, uh, safety and, uh, wayfinding, uh, for the, uh, for the site. Uh, right now, one of the biggest areas that we wanted to deal with, uh, was getting kinda this, what we call a sea of asphalt. Uh, and bringing a little bit of water to it. Uh, now with becoming a junior, uh, high school, you're not gonna have the kids driving. Uh, so you kinda take that element out there. So we're already making the place a little bit safer. Uh, but we wanna maintain, uh, the parking for the different events that happen inside the school, uh, but then also for local track, soccer, et cetera. Uh, so we, we wanted to maintain, uh, the same amount of parking, okay? But you can see that just by creating this, uh, this item in here, creating a little bit of order in the way that, uh, the traffic would flow in and out of the site. Uh, so this would be your parent, or the bus, uh, drop-off area here. And then when you enter into the site, you come through for the parent drop-off and you can go left or right, depending if you wanna go to the four or five building, uh, or the high school, uh, or you can exit out. So the reason for the parent over here is it gives a little bit more stack space, uh, than coming into the front, uh, here. Uh, so to, to kinda just overlay that a little bit here, here again is the site. You can kinda see, uh, underneath, we've kinda shaded it in, but you can see we're adding a little bit of green space here. Uh, those will be, there will be some parking spaces that we'll eliminate here. We're extending this green space out a little bit more to again, create this, uh, order that we have, uh, sidewalks being added. And then down in here, uh, creating a barrier here because this is gonna be the main, uh, one of the main veins over to the, uh, high school and the four or five building. One, one thing to note is this area here, we are going to eliminate the full circle around the school. So we'll, we'll create this as green space, uh, to limit access back into the, uh, to this area here, uh, creating. Uh, so, uh, that's really about the extent of, uh, the site work, uh, that we have, at least right now, within our, our scope. Uh, moving on to the, uh, the building itself, uh, obviously you're seeing a lot of roof there. Right now, we're going to investigate, uh, if we're gonna replace the entire roof or if there's areas that could remain for, you know, extended period of time. We've got a budget for the roof. It's roughly 1.5 million dollars. Uh, can we replace this entire roof for 1.5 million dollars? We'll find out. Okay. If, if we can't, then we have to look. Are we gonna take money from somewhere else? Or are we gonna need money? I mean, it's, it's, it's quite annoying. Uh, now, these roofs are at different ages. So we could potentially look at, at salvaging some of the roof, uh, or, you know, it'd be nice just to have. Getting inside the building, here's the existing plan as it exists. Uh, administration, one of your academic spaces here. Auditorium, your arts, music over here, your athletics are over in here. You can kinda see it through the color code that we've got here, uh, with our courtyard in the middle. So this is how it exists right now. And if you remember, one of the main goals is to, to fix this, this main corridor through here and then it kinda goes into all your different pods, if you will. We wanted to fix that. Uh, so that's one of the areas of focus is to do that. But then after that, it's all about normal, safe and dry at this point. Okay. And making sure that we can hopefully stay within the budget numbers that we have in our master plan. So you're not gonna, so you, you'll see as we fade into the new plan, okay, there isn't a lot of difference. So here's existing, okay, and here's new. We're keeping the administration. We're keeping, uh, the.
Cafeteria.
Main commons here. People are academics over here, the, the athletics over here, the arts in the same spot. So a lot of this would be renovation work of, uh, new floors, ceilings, painting, doors, et cetera. But you do see, we did a, we, we are putting a, a new corridor between here and then a new corridor here, uh, which will allow the students to flow within these spaces without having to come out into the main corridor. We're getting rid of a classroom and a toilet room here to extend the cafeteria. So we have a goal of 400 people, uh, per, uh, period. Auditorium pretty much stays the same. Gym, locker rooms here. We're gonna be focusing on that after SD. This area right here, I kept it white because if you go back to the previous plan, this area right here is like a multipurpose space. This area down here, okay, is your central receiving, custodial, okay? When we go to the new plan, we need to have a spot for that. Currently, we're making this into additional classrooms for potentially in the future because you're growing, okay? But we also need a space for, uh, deliveries and your custodial, et cetera. So this space is kinda gonna stay white for maybe a little while, uh, until we can figure out where we're gonna be. Uh, we've got, we've got the time to do it. And that's, that's where we're at. A few more weeks, we'll give it over to Robertson and, uh, start working on this.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
I heard you say you were getting rid of a bathroom?
No, we're, we're.
Okay. Cause there's already very little bathrooms in that building, building.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
It's getting, uh, relocated over into this area right there. And then we've got one here and then we've got two of them over here. And then we do have something to do with toilet rooms as well.
Okay. Thanks. Robertson Construction.
All right. So I am going to try to go through my presentation quickly to get to some additional information that I wanna cover after the presentation. To talk about where we're at on the elementary school, things are still going great. Uh, really happy with the progress that's happening out there. All the concrete is down on the first floor except the student dining area right here. Uh, we are finishing a little bit of, kind of intricate masonry around the stage to get some steel tied in. But by the end of the month, we should also have that poured, which would have all of our first floor done. Uh, on top of that, we should also be pouring at least the area C, second floor. Uh, as you see, the walls are going up in that area. They've set steel in the gym. We have now got decking on the gym, uh, starting to enclose that area. Once they finish in the gym, they're moving over to the second floor of C to start setting the floor. And we'll pour that, um, steel will progress from the gym through this first floor. Then we'll put the ceiling on here and then we'll come over to the second floor. So it's, it's still going and morphing through a lot of changes right now, which is exciting. This is one of the better times for me for the project because you can actually see what's happening. On the high school, uh, the gymnasium is up. gymnasium is up. We've completed the walls in the gym. You can see it. We've also got foundations in, in this area and they're currently working on this wall, which was very heftily, if heftily is a word, built. But it's a 30 foot wall. It's actually two walls. So the mason's got to go around that entire thing twice, which has locked out a lot of the other trades. So because of that, our original progress was to work this way and then around these rooms. What we're doing with all the other trades besides the mason is coming over here and starting all of our footers, foundations, underground plumbing, underground electric, and that will give everybody else a place to work. Once we get these walls up, then we'll move back into that area. The mason will move out of that area and back over where we've already finished the underground work. So it's a change we've made because of the realization of just what is in that auditorium. Thanks, Brian. But it will go well, go well. In regards to work that's completed, obviously at the elementary, all the underground work is done. The gym, the steel, masonry bearing going in area C. Over at the high school, we just discussed. In regards to contingencies. In regards to contingencies, we're on track and doing well. Both CMR and owner contingencies in all projects are, there's nothing abnormal. I would say the biggest abnormal thing we have right now in the site is some excess soils, which is going to be a larger change order that we're dealing with. But that's the first large type of change that we've had that we're working through. And we're getting that taken care of. That's kind of been last month's hot, hot item that we've worked through. In regards to moving forward, we've kind of discussed where we're going with the elementary and with the high school over the next month. Some middles at the elementary are about 50% done now. At the high school, they're about 33% done. RFIs are still tracking pretty well between both parties. Quality control, we're, it's ongoing. And when you look at our quality control sheet, our goal is to get all the items from the bottom up to the top. So all of those are individual meetings that we schedule with the architect and the contractors to go over the expectations of what we think things should look like and what the material should be for those activities. We did have a safety review in October. There were five violations noted. They were evaded on site. A violation could be anything from a guy not wearing his safety glasses to a ladder that is, should not be on site being used. So we took care of all those as we went through. To some of the pictures, the box culvert for the connector road, again, some kind of like that orchestra pit, things that you might not realize when we just say we've got to put a box culvert in. When you look at the size of the box culvert, it's substantial. You could put another classroom in there if you need it. And then area C, the gym, this fixture down here is actually a picture of the first piece of steel being set on the building. The gymnasium enclosed. Over at the high school, looking at the gymnasium there and then looking at the classroom sections back at the gymnasium to kind of give a perspective on size, start of the auditorium walls. And then our typical shot at the front door or front of both buildings, looking back at them. And again, another shot that we, is a neat one to see just because of what you've seen on the plans looks exactly like what's being built, which that's a good thing. Same thing with the elementary building. You can see all phases of it. And the high school auditorium down here with the classrooms around it going into the open space and then the gym is back here. So that's the exciting part.
Yeah.
Now to talk about Etna. As Kirk stated, we had some budget issues on the Etna building. We started out over $2 million over budget with a budget of $5 million. Going through with the team, we've already value engineered or, or cut almost a million dollars out of the project for things that might have been once, but not needs and added to the project. The next slide here is actually items that we've looked through the project in order for us to get to budget, which is where we currently are at. These are items we've taken out of the project and we have to decide, do we want these included? Some of them are easy. Some of them are much more difficult. And then going through, do you want me to go through each item?
Well, I was going to ask Rick, we have a 11B later on in the meeting. Do we want to do that now? Or do you?
Well, it's a text again. She's unanswered.
You started texting me now?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to see if we wanted to move that discussion out before the executive session.
We can, we can move it.
Why are the contractors still here?
Yeah, we can do it now.
If you have any problems, say it.
Yeah. Do you need a motion or do you need some?
Well, you could change the gender. Somebody could move the change of gender.
Yeah. No, we can totally move it. I mean, we'll need a motion to move it, but let's do that to move it out. So they can, so they can all leave.
It's okay. No problem.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be legal here though.
Yeah. Can we get a motion to move what, to change that gender?
I make a motion that we move 11B up to our present state in this meeting.
Yes, right after presentation.
Yes.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zell?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right. That motion passes.
Let the other ones finish and we'll come back to this.
All right. So we'll move on now to Hill.
Well, he gets to do all the pretty pictures, but he gets to do the hard part tonight too. So my executive summary pretty much matches his. We are working through the, the Michael Thompson side, the contingency progress. At the elementary school, we were over budget. We're going to talk about what we're going to do about that tonight. We will actually do that face submission and locally funded initiative memorandum of understanding, LFI MOU next month when we get the decision on how we're moving forward. Watkins School renovation, this schematic design meeting tells, you had to see a little bit of that today. Do you have a question on those documents? Are we getting rid of all the partitions? All those little ones? So that is a really big renovation. It's a kind of good size budget, but that's going to go away pretty quick. So I'm going to always nag him to try to keep him on budget. That's a gut. Everything's out of there. We'll start from scratch. So we're going to get those documents on Halloween.
No pun intended.
I have upcoming tasks, approval of the PR, SBA submission, and LFI MOU for Etna. We're going to push that to next month till we get through this other discussion. And because Bob's not Debbie Dyer, I'm Debbie Dyer. The risks, it's always the same ones. They're always on our minds. We've got to keep them, you know, keep our eye on them. But any potential schedule impacts, we have great weather. All these estimate budget reconciliations and GNP negotiations, budgets are difficult anywhere in the state for any kind of construction right now. Prices are high. The allowances for the later packages, as they design, you need to design within that budget or allow. The weather, and then we have some additional soil on site that we have been working through that. So tonight, you're going to be presented with some information on Etna and possible alternates in scope EB and additional dollars. And I thought I'd take a look tonight just to see where we were. I know we talked a month ago about being over 80 right committed right now. We have spent up until each group check today, a little over $6 million. And it will go fast with these two schools coming since the buffer came over. So I'll do that next month and we'll see how much we spent.
I keep encouraging contractors at times.
Are there any questions?
All right. About building continuous improvement plans, let's start with Ms. Horstman.
Good evening.
I don't know what to do without following Mr. Pratt. I guess I'll have to say all my own words this time. If you look up on the board, we have our continuous improvement plan. And I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention. First, in the upper left-hand corner on the report card data, that what, those are 18, 19 passage rates for fourth grade ELA with 66% passage, fourth grade math was 88% passage, which was the indicator that we met at mid, at Etna last year. And then those, I don't need to read them all too, but that's where we ended last year from our Ohio State tests. And then the, one of the other boxes I wanted to show you was just the gap analysis, which is the middle one on the right side. I'm going to use some of that data in our opportunities for improvement, looking at our gap analysis across our subcategories, our EL students at 27%. This is on track, not necessarily proficient or above, but on track to be proficient or above, and our special education students. So with those pieces of data and then our math scores in the green, the building level in process data, we have the four goals that are the opportunities for improvement. So what we're really looking for is 70% of fourth and fifth grade students to meet those math goals. That's a focus on growth. Number two is to continue to close the gap for all subgroups on the state test. So that's, that's our gap closing, our goal on gap closing. And then 80% of the students would be proficient on the ELA state test and 80% will be proficient on the math and the science. Basically the three subject matters that we did meet the indicator on. So those are based on achievement. So we tried to look at our growth, our achievement and our gap closing for our opportunities for improvement. And what we're doing this year on the bottom middle right, the programmatic changes and how we're going to get there. The district has supported us and Etna's doing a lot this year to work on these things, not only with our teacher-based teams, meshing with our district level teams to, with our, we've added department meetings, grade level meetings on a, I would say bi-weekly. We have a monthly schedule. Most teams meet every other week. We're fully implementing bridges in math for fourth and fifth grade where we've restructured our RTI implementation and strengthened it. And now we're bringing something that was on here last year was we were piloting the Lexia program. Now we are using it within our RTI program for our general ed population in addition to our special ed population. What we've truly are over, umbrella is working on social emotional needs for our students in order to affect all of these things. So we're using comm classroom at least three times a day in our classrooms. Our pathways from Lincoln County is doing lessons on empowerment, kindness, anti-wullying, bringing those in. We have a full-time counselor now who's doing in-class lessons, small group and individual work. And then we are using self-contained two-person teams instead of three in order to build relationships with the students. So that teachers have fewer students to work with and a stronger depth of knowledge because that was in our root causes, those little squares or rectangles on, by the gap analysis, social emotional barriers and transancy is one of the things that really affects us the most right now, just where we are at this moment in time. So we're definitely putting in the efforts for that. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Good evening. It's going to be the same process. So if we start at the top, with the state report card in the top left, our passage rates, they are not where we want them to be. But if we look at that box right beside the progress on the last year's goals, four out of those seven, we didn't improve. And the other thing that we made huge progress on last year, my teachers all school year worked on creating rigorous CQAs. Those are, those are the assessments that happen at the end of each nine weeks. At this point, other than social studies, which doesn't have its own test, we are using air, either air practice questions on those CQAs and/or air light questions on all those CQAs. And so rigor in our CQAs is matching that of air. And we just finished first round this, the past two weeks. And thoughts would be, if you asked the students, they would say those CQAs are difficult. The next step in that process would be our teachers then look at those results, analyze what needs to happen and reflect on how they can instill those test-taking skills and that rigor to get kids prepared for the next nine weeks. Our CQAs are cumulative, building towards third quarter, which is about four weeks out from the air test to get kids prepared to see where we are with four weeks to go before that air test. So that is the, we've created them. Now they're refining them this, this school year. The opportunities for improvement, we broke down. The report card in our first box is achievement. We want to increase both math and English at least 5% across the board, all five or all three grade levels. With progress, that is value added. We want to increase all four categories by at least one letter grade. This past year, letter grade took a dip there. In the years previous, we've always had As and C in one category. This past year, we dropped much lower than we would like. And so we want to get us back to where our value added has always been. And so that will be the goal this year. Gap closing, we'd like to increase the students with disabilities, math and ELA achievement by at least seven to 10% and increase our EL achievement in math by at least 7%. Not reading because we actually met all of the state's indicator in reading. That's why it's not down there for gap closing. And then the last opportunities for improvement is culture. We'd like to create and maintain a positive culture throughout the building this coming school year. That gets us down to the programmatic changes. How are we going to get there? As I talked about last year, we continue to use teacher-based teams, focusing on data and instruction. From the district level, there's been a much better tie with our building leadership teams and using that data. And so now they're all working much closer together and all of it is reporting back up to our district level leadership team. We've made a curricular change in math at, after talking with the math teachers. And that curriculum change is much more rigorous than it has been in the past. We've coupled that with Alex. So our students are getting rigorous lessons in the classroom. And then Alex is that piece that is the constant review and constant reworking of those math problems with a goal set for every student. And also they know that I love to spend money. They've also suggested that there would be extra incentives if they hit even above and beyond their goals. And so they are working out what that looks like and how they can map that out in every math classroom so that kids can see as their colleagues, their friends, peers are reaching goals. So they can also be challenged to reach those goals. I'm hopeful you know that we added more time in sixth and seventh grade, which was, has been fantastic. And of course, that's created the envy of the eighth grade. Just throwing that out there, over there, envy of my eighth grade teachers. They would like more time. But sixth and seventh grade math and ELA, it's been going great. They have been using it to its fullest. I would say a side advantage that I had no idea was going to happen is it has actually made transitions in the halls less because kids aren't moving all at the same time. And so if you come in the building, you would say we've lost students. We haven't. They're, because they're not changing at the same time, hallways aren't as crowded this school year. The other one is rigor CQAs, which I've already talked about. Before the school year even started, we called and invited some of our most at-risk students and their parents to a family fun night, just to get closer, get, build relationships. Since then, Mr. Haradina's students has set up a weekly meeting with each one of those students. And now the students come down after a lot of time, even when Mr. Har is not here. And so it's been fantastic. I'm going to sing praise to the seventh grade, which if you remember, this current school year, they have the least amount of student reminders, and it's by almost two hundred. So they, it has been a fantastic start to the school year. They have been fantastic. And I, I mean, every time we see them, we're praising them. Matter of fact, one of them came up for his reward that he had worked out with our school psychologist. The school psychologist was in a meeting, so he talked me through why he was getting his reward, and I absolutely was very grateful to get him his reward and send him on his long weekend. So it has been a fantastic start at the middle school. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Just saying. I'm nearly asleep by now. Okay. I'm not going, I'm going to deviate, just so you know. Just talk about some of the things we've done. In terms of achievement, this past year, overall performance on state test exceeded the eighty percent threshold. We did it, ELA one, ELA two, biology, government, US history. So we picked up an additional indicator, and that was ELA two from last year. This indicator also factors in the performance level of each student from limited basic, proficient, accelerated, advanced. And our index has grown over the last three years. We were eighty-seven, ninety-one, ninety-two last year, so some modest increases. Algebra one and geometry, the passage rate dipped just a little bit, and we still are under that eighty percent benchmark. And I'll talk a little bit about that towards the end. As far as gap closing, where the annual measurable objectives compare the performance of each student to the, to an expected performance level that the state sets, we surpassed that performance goal with all our students, our economically disadvantaged students and our students with disabilities in English language arts and our graduation rate. Four-year graduation rate was up to ninety-five point four percent, five-year was ninety-six point seven, both up. In the next area, the value-added, our student progress, student growth, that helps measure, you know, the impact that teachers and students have, I'm sorry, the teachers have on students' academic progress. Our data definitively indicates that our students made over a wealth, a full year's worth of growth in ELA one, ELA two, algebra and geometry overall, and with gifted students, students with disabilities, and students in the lowest twenty percent in achievement. I want to point out that our three-year composite growth index of twenty-one point two eight has us ranked number twenty-six in the state. There's over three thousand buildings in the state of Ohio. You know, also, this is going to be the fourth consecutive year we've exceeded expectations in student growth in those four areas. Areas of improvement that we're going to look at is our math, math gap closing. We continue to make progress in algebra and geometry, closing the gap with, you know, with all students, those considered economically disadvantaged. However, we took a step backward with students with disabilities. We, we went under fifty percent, and we've got some things we're going to address there. We also, you know, need to improve in looking at, you know, how students are prepared for success. This metric measures how well students, you know, are prepared for future opportunities. It looks at the number of kids taking ACT and SAT and how many score remediation free. We looked at the number of kids earning an Otter's diploma, AP participation, how many receive an AP score of three or better, industry-recognized credentials, and then the number of kids earning, doing enrollment credit. Some of the causes of, of why we struggle in some areas, we still go back to lack of foundational skills, literacy skills, numeracy skills. And then this is something we've kind of addressed a little bit this year. We look at lack of self-efficacy. I mean, kids, they don't believe in their own academic abilities. I mean, it's amazing how many kids will tell us, hey, I'm not a good math student, I'm not a good reader. Our guidance counselors, we, last year, we went to OSU Newark to talk to one of their learning specialists, and he really emphasized this. And he says, this is across the board, it's with high achievers, it's with low achievers. You know, kids, kids that are high achievers will go onto a school, and then they'll see other high achievers and think, oh, man, I can't compete with this. So we're, we're working on things there. Obviously, social emotional needs, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, social awareness, all of those things are things that are an issue with kids and kind of impede learning. And then the other thing is, we have to take some responsibility. One-dimensional instruction, you know, lack of feedback, lack of focused practice opportunities, lack of intentional planning, those are things we're addressing through the, through the new OTES model, which I think, you know, we're, it's in its infancy, we're piling it, but it's been very effective. Some of the goals we have this year, we're going to target areas of need, algebra and geometry, and then obviously, we want to make, sustain our continued growth. So looking at, kind of breaking that down, in terms of prepared for success, we want to raise our ACT average score to twenty-one or over combined. We want to raise our ACT remediation, remediation-free scores to thirty-five percent. Currently, we have about fifty-seven point four percent of our kids attending college after two years. We'd ideally like to have that remediation rate equal that, but that's going to take some time. In terms of achievement, we'd like to increase our performance in algebra one by ten percent, in geometry by ten percent. Geometry would put us at about seventy-three percent. Algebra one, if we could go up by ten percent, we would hit that eighty percent benchmark by the state. And again, continue our increases in the performance index. Gap closing, we need to increase, you know, the achievement scores with students with disabilities by ten to fifteen percent. And in terms of growth, again, continue that four-year positive trajectory in composite student growth. Some of the things we're doing to do that, you know, there's some things that we call, we're going to call planned abandonment. We're just eliminating what has a minimal effect. You know, weekly meetings, we had, last year, we had grade-based teams, teacher-based teams in departments. We've eliminated grade-based teams. At high school, it's difficult because of the content area, and you have students at the transition, at grade levels. So we've eliminated those, and we're going to go once a month with department meetings and then teacher-based teams the other three weeks. Also, teachers working in isolation. You know, teaching and learning is not, it's not a solitary activity. I mean, it requires collaboration, and we've increased the opportunities for collaboration. Also, we've given up on iXL Math. Again, it was a math and language practice website. A lot of the times, it was just kind of given to kids and for, for roadwork, and really didn't have any impact. Some of the things we're emphasized, we continue to emphasize and we're adding, we're going to continue emphasis on content area literacy, numeracy, improved acquisition application of math skills, professional development design with student outcomes in mind, and expanded use of instructional coaches. Those two go hand in hand. We're using the instructional coaches particularly in language arts and in math, talking with our teachers, setting up professional development opportunities where they can go out and see other teachers, visit other schools, and get different ideas. You know, focused data analysis and teacher-based teams in departments. Like Mr. Brown said, we've also incorporated Alex, online math tutoring and assessment we're using with our students with disabilities currently. Lexia, the technology-based reading program, the same, you know, that has replaced iXL. Treka is our online credit recovery program. We have a number of students that have already completed credit recovery in, within the nine weeks, and they're moving on to other, other classes they may need. We've added college credit plus chemistry at the expense of losing AP chemistry, so I'll have to add that. We specifically designated two, two two-minute segments of the day for comm classroom, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Increased our focus on social emotional learning work. We had Warrior Wellness Day, Mindful Mondays, classroom and group presentations. We use Contrel Skene's Deputy Brill, Danielle Simpson, outside speakers to address a lot of the social emotional issues going on. Data-informed algebra and geometry instruction, performance level descriptors, projections. We have discussed this, we're going to try to embed some tier-two interventions in algebra one and geometry where they can, twenty minutes a day, twice a week, we're going to try to get kids pulled out to really focus and work on specific weaknesses. I mean, if you're in a geometry class and you still are struggling with basic algebra, that's what you're going to get. So and we'll look at that for nine weeks, and we'll determine, hey, if it works, it works, and keep going. If it doesn't, we'll try something else. Integration, integrated rigor in ELA one, two, and three, incorporating more ACT strategy. ELA one is no longer a tested area, but they are going to incorporate a lot more grammar in order to, you know, build that skill for these students going into ELA one and ELA, I mean, ELA two and ELA three. Again, our focus is on processes and relationships. You know, the one thing we told our staff at the beginning of the year, we continue to reiterate, is know your kids. Know what they can do, know what they can't do, and how we can make them better. And we're all about ideas, and our purpose is just to improve teaching and learning, and we're going to do whatever it takes to make that work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Carter.
All right, shifting your focus now, that's where we're taking, taking the kids to end their career with Mr. Tan. Shifted to our foundation here at the preschool. I'm going to start with our goals here at the Early Learning Center. We're looking to support our students to become independent, responsible, and confident problem solvers, as well as decision-makers, supporting them in gaining their knowledge and skills in important academic, as well as social, emotional, and their physical domains, learning to plan many of their own activities, carrying those plans out that they make for themselves each day, and talking with one another about what they've learned as they've carried out those plans each day, as well as developing strong executive function and self-regulation skills each day here at the Early Learning Center. With those goals in mind, looking at our spring map data, again, wonderful success ending the year last year when we look at an average red score of a hundred and forty with consideration that a one forty-one is the expectation for beginning kindergarten. With that, the range for our kiddos transitioning from last year into kindergarten, keeping in mind that probably approximately eighty of our students from last year transitioned to kindergarten, was a big group of students leaving us last year, making that transition to kindergarten. Our scores range from one oh seven to one fifty-eight. With that, eighty-six percent of our students were kindergarten-ready, leaving us making that transition, with eight point five percent of the kiddos scoring more than a standard deviation above kindergarten-ready. So again, wonderful progress as they're making that transition over Kirkersville. Looking at some of the changes and considerations, building on our goals is the curriculum this year. Looking at high scope and consideration, calling it a curriculum, it's less of a curriculum, more of a framework, when we look at the daily routines that are put into place for our students, starting each day with greeting time, followed by students having a planning time, so there's a focus on the plan, do, review. So students plan for their work time that follows their, their planning time, because they move into work time. And the work time is followed by recall, so students come back together and they talk about what they learned during their work time. That is followed by small group as well as work, or large group time and outside time each day. And with high scope, it fully integrates academic and social emotional learning in its framework, including key developmental indicators in the assessment component, which is core advantage. So again, I'm excited to share some of that information with you guys upcoming next fall, as well as developing all domains of development, including approaches to learning, social emotional development, the physical development and health, language literacy and communication, mathematics, science, social studies, and the creative arts. Obviously, all of these domains are aligned with Ohio or rural learning standards. Looking at the next component being hegemony, we all know the studies have shown that phonemic awareness is a foundational skill that is essential for learning to read. With this in mind, by learning to identify sounds through oral and auditory activities, our students are becoming phonemically aware. Engaging them in these phonemic awareness instruction is developing students' understanding of sounds, as well as their knowledge indirectly reflecting, or reflected in their spelling and writing skills. So each day, our students incorporate a brief ten-minute hegemony, phonemic awareness lesson with our students as well. Very hands-on with, with some of the skills, students, trying to think with one of them today, just breaking words apart. So if I say, let's see, cart, wheel, take away the cart, what do you have? So again, it's neat to see the kids incorporating that and getting their bodies moving with a lot of that, too. Following up with the curriculum part being sign language, we have a visitor from the high school come on a weekly basis to incorporate sign language lessons with our kiddos. It's followed up throughout the week with our teachers and some online modules that Jennifer sends to us, so they can practice and continue to have that repeated exposure through the week. But it's really neat to see the, the communication going on with kids and them incorporating that on a daily basis as well. Looking at social emotional, we, as other schools have talked about, are incorporating comm classroom. We also do it twice a day, our mindful minutes. We start each of our sessions as a group in the gym to do our comm classroom, and then we end each session in the classroom hallway with everyone doing a comm classroom as they get ready to leave for each day. Also incorporating zones of regulation, so having the students learn to recognize their feelings and emotion, and then the strategies that they can use to be responsible for those feelings and emotions. Incorporating PACTs Good Behavior Games, so teaching our students to be PACTs leaders and what being a PACTs leader looks like for us. Followed by PBIS, again, looking at sending the message and communicating to students what it looks like to be respectful, responsible, and kind. So kind of looking with the model this year of hashtag be kind, so random acts of kindness and how we can treat others with kindness throughout the day. And last here is just incorporating parents. Obviously, they're, they're essential in the development and especially at the foundation that we're building here. So incorporating monthly parent involvement opportunities, including workshops, parent engagement activities, and building those relationships that obviously is a pre-K-12 district, setting those positive relationships with our families that's going to continue through their educational career.
Questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Want to bring Clay? Can Clay back up for us?
Yeah, Clay.
Etna renovation issues.
All right. So to run through some of the items and...
If you could, underline on attached.
Do you want to have it on the screen?
I have it here on my screen.
The first item on the list is replacement of all the exterior windows. Right now, we have not included that, or we have removed that from the project due to cost. So presented to the board of, do we want to do that for the cost listed, which would be above and beyond the budget?
So this is real quick, these first ones are ones that we feel should be added to the budget. These are ones we are asking the board for money. This is the one point three six six. The second ones we pulled out as alternates, and those will only be done if there was bid savings. But this first group, we feel, some of them we have no choice, and it gets down to just stuff that was missed during the assessment. But this first group is what the ones we're asking for money for, to be able to add to the project. Sorry, can I do it?
No, that's fine. The second item is replacement of all the exterior doors and hardware. The third item is adding resinous floors and base in the restrooms, taking out the current floor and putting in a resinous floor for longer longevity. The fourth item is new flooring and base in all the classrooms. So we're currently leaving the floor as is, potentially doing some cleaning. The next item is the terrazzo, the current corridors. We've got replacement or repair where the corridors are cracked. But then above and beyond that, what this item would include is going through all the corridors and doing a grind and clean and polish on the corridors so they look nice. The next item is replacing the chiller and associated pumps with the chiller, so that's for air conditioning. We've also got a reduced size of the generator. And by reducing the size of the generator, you would still have all your life safety items included on that generator. What you would not have is the cooler freezer. So we're currently leaving the floor as is, potentially doing some cleaning. The next item is the terrazzo, the current corridors. We've got replacement or repair where the corridors are cracked. But then above and beyond that, what this item would include is going through all the corridors and doing a grind and clean and polish on the corridors so they look nice. The next item is replacing the chiller and associated pumps with the chiller. So that's for air conditioning. We've also got a reduced size of the generator. And by reducing the size of the generator, you would still have all your life safety items included on that generator. What you would not have is the cooler freezer or some of the mechanical pumps for air conditioning or heating. So that's another choice. The next item is the air handlers and all associated ductwork. This was an item that was not included in the master plan assessment, but to accomplish what is needed or what is desired by the master plan, you need to replace the air handler units. So I would say if anything, this is one that is a mistake or an oversight in the master assessment and budgeting. And then the fourth item isn't really an item for you to choose whether you need it or not. It states site safety allowance, that should actually be swing space allowance. And that's, I think, the team, the project team, including Bob and Rick, pursuing with the state that hey, if you missed something on the assessment, we should at least be able to incorporate the swing space allowance as part of the budget. We should get that money.
So that way, if we don't get it, we have to pay for it, the budget's going to be short. So if we get it, that's less money we have to find, right?
Right.
The state agrees, allows you to use that money. But actually, these things, talking as a group, we felt we need, I mean, we need to replace those windows. They're 20 years old, 20, you know. You know, chiller, like we have the chiller, it's 20, 23-year-old chiller that right now, it's not going to be replaced. But we'll probably have to replace it eventually. You know, it's got some updated pumps and stuff, but still, the old chiller, 23 years old.
I have a question.
Yeah, me too.
Sorry. Why does it cost us money to reduce the size of our generator?
It's not actually a re. It would cost you money to get it back up to the size needed to handle those items. So we reduced it by that amount. If you would want to get the larger generator, that's what it would cost to get the generator.
Okay. Because it just looks, I wanted to clarify that, because there's a lot of people that are going to look at this online and be like, why are they charging, you know? So that's why I wanted to say it out loud.
So this is actually to increase the size of the generator big enough to make it cover the air conditioner and the cooler. You now have to add 40 more 39.5 back onto it. Because right now, you have a smaller generator that will not cover the air conditioner and the freezer cooler.
Correct.
And the heat too.
And the heat too.
So a lot of these items.
Really, it's not worth anything but emergency lighting right now.
Right.
A lot of these items were not identified fully in the master plan, which is why those are some of the items that we pulled out of the project, trying to get it more centered with what was assessed. And also looking at the reality of you're doing a renovation. How do you want to do it?
Follow-up question. Sorry. If some of these items weren't identified in the master plan, have we gone ahead and looked at the other future renovations to see if we missed the same items?
How did we miss this?
Well, I know, for instance, when we talk about air handlers, I know there was some negotiation of the master plan of things that should be in or shouldn't be in. And when, from what I understand, when we went from the two-pipe to the four-pipe system, which is what the master plan says you want to do, it got missed that the air handlers had to be in there to accommodate a four-pipe system. The current air handlers you have won't handle that. So as they were going through the assessment and working through, the value of the new air handlers was not put into the assessment.
So I still have the question, is that going to happen again at Potasko and Kirk?
You know, I think as a team, and I was just talking to somebody today on your project, is that we need to be more focused on master plan identified items and get that into the design for sure, but also almost a reassessment of the master plan. When we talk through each category, is this the full scope of what you want? Let's get that into the drawings first, see where the budget is. And then if anything is missed, we kind of go from here before we talk about changing classrooms or something that's not in the assessment. So I think right now, from the design standpoint and the construction assessment standpoint, we've got to look at it as we're designed, we're going to design exactly what's in the master plan. Okay, here's where the budget is. What do you want that's above and beyond the master plan? Or what is missed in the master plan first that has to be incorporated? So we've kind of been using the master plan as a guideline of this is our budget of about where we should be. But not diving totally into each segment as we go through the design meetings and start to formulate what we're doing.
It's almost like you need to start with what you need and work to what you want, just like you're doing with the athletic facility. These, by the time we get to those last two schools, these assessments will be around you around the beginning of five years old. So in addition to scope, something may have broken in that timeframe. So in addition to scope, we lost about half the dollars.
Right, and that's something that we've always got to be conscious of for each design that we're starting. You know, when we started designing today, we're not going to be building it for another year or a year plus. And your assessments were done two, three years ago. The economy is a lot different than it was three years ago. I mean, pricing is going up.
But does that have anything to do with like a four-pipe versus a two-pipe?
That was just, that was one item that, out of the whole assessment, when we went through it, that was one item that we identified that hey, this was blown. This was a mistake.
And it won't happen again with the other future?
Can't say that, because the state's one does the assessment, not us. And the actual assessment is done by the state.
But they've already done it, right?
They've already done it.
So do we know if that's going to happen?
No, that's all we're saying.
We don't know that we have an air handler that won't handle a two-pipe?
Until they get to renovate, Edna's only one has a two-pipe system. Edna's the only one that's unique. But yeah, we could run this issue, we just don't know until they get to designing it.
I mean, this is. I guess my overall question is, are there things that we're finding with this one that we can go ahead and check that master plan to make sure that we're not going to?
She's certainly probably at this point, knowing how much difficulty we have had with basic school, let us go sit down with those master plans.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's going to be difficult to do an amendment. Yeah, so even if we find something that's wrong, I can just prepare to, I hope they can't do anything about it. So we.
Well, maybe.
That'll give us a chance to be advantaged.
But we could design it different.
But part of this also is until Governor Miller has a chance with their engineers to go in and evaluate for design, what they've actually got and what needs to be moved, replaced, or what is deficient now that wasn't then, you're not going to truly know the full aspect of that until they can assess it and tell you what you have.
But we can certainly go through those. I mean, because the things can happen. I mean, you could have an air handle break that was fine 10 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago when they did the assessment.
I understand.
You could have roof issues that have come to this school.
Right.
And those are things that we're, you know, we need to talk about getting what needs to be done to stabilize your absence and keep your classrooms more safe and dry, and then we'll go in and add.
Right, I'm not, you're right, and I understand that. And my thought is, if we find things that the state has blatantly missed, we will still probably have to pay for it, but maybe that could be a leverage tool to go to them and say, why, we're paying 1.3 million, why don't you look at our enrollment and correct our enrollment?
To Bob benefit, he does that in every course you need.
Well, I'm sure he does, but I mean, here's, here's numbers right in front of you, state, that, it must a chiller for God's sake.
And that's.
Not all of the stuff is missed. The only thing that's really missed on this list was, was the air things, the costs that go into like the trailer.
It's still at almost $400,000 miss.
Yeah. I mean, that.
How do you miss cleaning terrazzo, clean and polish?
It might originally been there, but the issue is some of the stuff might have been in the assessment, but there's no money to do it.
So it is a combination. It's not just all missed assessment. It's a combination of, hey, we've got a budget. And our job is to pull things out to get it to that budget so we can at least say for the schematic design, we're on budget. Here is your list of items that are not included. Here is your alternates. But to, for us to stay on budget, you're not getting any of this. So that's the tough side of this is that trying to pull these things down, you know, when we did the new builds and the site, it was kind of hard to pull the site down. I mean, we did try to save some money and we did some redesign and worked through that. But for a building, you know, it comes to a choice of, are you going to be on budget and not have it or do you want it?
And you know, one thing about the handlers, we could go back to the state and try to get an amendment, but we're trying to more on their, Bob's more working on their enrollment side. So you know, if we can get them help with the addition to high school or new elementary, that's more of a fight than this hand than this shit list.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying bring that into the discussion.
Right, but if it's going to happen, renter after renter after renter, that's, that 393,000 is 30% of this.
I don't disagree, that's a lot of money. It is, it is a big mess.
I mean, if you truly look at this list, the one thing you have, probably have to have, is the air handler unit. Everything else theoretically, you could go without. You don't have to do them. Do you really probably need to do them for a renovation? Sure. But it's a hard decision.
Here's a renovated school with old windows and doors.
Old chiller, yeah.
Right.
And we always have problems with the heating and cooling in every building in this district. We're not going to replace the.
This is why we kind of felt this list is things that we really need versus, you know, that's what it is.
So where are we going to get this money?
We're looking for donations. I'll also maybe get $10,000.
Yeah, we gave that away tonight.
But basically, as I was saying, we have 1.366. So in our PI contingency money, we've been putting money back. So right now, that, after we took out, when we put already in for the four, five buildings, there's still 286,000 there, 287,000, with another half million dollars coming in this year from the JED. So in that account, we have about 787,000. If we go to our local share interest income, you know, a board approved the transfer 1.5 to Main Allen last month, they'll pay for part of the additional stuff. There's still about 377,000 there. Plus additional money will keep coming out. This money is still invested. We still have about 70 million dollars in investments. I'm really investing, so we're going to keep getting money, it just won't be slow. And then right now, for our local, for our LFI account, we have about $440,000 of interest income in there. So all those three add together, we have about 1.6 million dollars there left. So we could use this to cover this, but guess what, there ain't nothing left.
Nothing left.
Right, and this is going to happen again.
That's why we're starting earlier during discussion, like if it's one of the field houses, we may have to borrow money to finish off these renovations or take it out of the general fund. Because high school is a lot of things, it's a big budget, 22 million, but there's a lot going on in that building. Like I said, I don't see leaving that roof on that building. I mean, I mean, that's, so I think we're going to need a lot more money than we have right now. And that's a big concern. I think we're having the ability to borrow money if we need it. How we do it can be worked out, we can probably do it, versus taking out the general fund. But that was going to have to be paid back, you know, with the PI, we can do it. But that's a big concern. So we have the money now to cover it. Now, October 31st, we're now having the money to cover the high school, the middle school renovation. I don't know what that number is yet, so.
Who's going to bring it in on Thursday?
What's up, Jess? And with a list of things that you may not include, but you know, that came, you know, that time we may be able to like transform our money to general fund, leave there for now, until we do a bond issue to pay for the athletic facility, and then maybe get additional money as part of that bond issue to basically use for the renovation, so. But that part is a big, there's a big concern. But I don't see half, I don't see any ability to leave it on windows. It just does not make sense. Or 20-year-old chiller.
Right, no.
We're going to have to replace it, so.
So really, you need to review the list and decide what are the absolutes. It could be the whole list, it could be a portion of the list, but we're trying to get that direction to move forward through SD and say that here is, here is, we're staying at the budget we were given, or we've got the budget plus this much for these items, and that's how we're moving forward. I think the next phase, or the next phase of drawings is due December 12th. So we'll, we'll try to get this information from you and then we'll approve the SD phase submission next month. And the month after that, we're going to be getting the new drawings.
So kind of like, I mean, if the board's okay, I would probably like a motion to approve this list. So Julia's direction, complete the LFI MOU for next board meeting. So we create, so we approve the SD for the elementary, I mean, the elementary renovation and the LFI MOU. So and then hopefully, if we get that site safety money applied towards a budget. If so, that's only a million dollars versus the 1.3, but there is, I don't think there is any owner contingency and all that.
You have some, you have about 174 LFI and co-funded construction contingencies.
Is that in there? Because it was, there was a concern.
I don't have it.
It's still yours. You've got to figure it out.
You've got to figure it out.
We're going to incorporate that.
Okay, so I was concerned, I mean, I didn't have any owner contingencies, something popped up. There may be some way there, so.
And that's not a lot for a renovation. That's almost uncomfortable. But I, we knew we needed money in scope for this project because the budget was so small and the scope was so expensive on it, that you can't see.
Part of the thing is, we're hoping that as the four, five is completed, the high school's completed, some money is left over from that project that we can also use to apply, you know? We have like a million dollars of contingency for the high school, we don't need all that. Four, five, there's some contention there, we don't need all that. If we don't need it, then we can eventually apply it towards other projects. So it just might take a while, we have to wait till those projects are done, closed out before we can actually. So that still may take two or three years for us to finally get the money. But you know, there is that possibility, but right now, it's. But this is a list that we felt we wanted to talk to you about, what you thought were, you could change it however you want to. I don't know if you want to look at the alternatives beforehand, the alternatives.
Are your recommend, are your recommendations for this entire list? Are your recommendations, are your recommendations for this entire list?
Just one thing that we haven't brought up, you know, we, and first, now you see why I'm a downer earlier in the meeting, but we also have gone with a technology plan that's called G-PON, in which this building is going to be loaded up with essential technology equipment to help run some other buildings. Now, you can't just move money from silo to silo in terms of state money, but our local money could possibly be saved in some of those other buildings because this building again is being beefed up, and I'm not sure exactly what that number you shot.
We're trying to work through the numbers.
Right, so where it's a little higher here, it's going to be lower in some of the other builds, so you're going to save in those buildings. So there'll be a little bit there now, whether that's 50,000, whether that's 100,000, that's just unclear. But back to your original question, we spent a lot of time, a lot of time going through these alternatives. And we truly believe, as Rick has said over and over, that the list here are things that we would strongly recommend you approve to move forward with. The other lists, we certainly could take more time and look at those. But those are a little bit more if, but bits come in under or a little lower than we anticipate. But these certainly will give that building some longevity to it. I think that's what Rick is trying to get to, is we don't want to renovate it and then five years later have to put new floors in or whatever it might be. So it does go hand in hand with maybe this building lasts for the life of its.
I still have a question. So on the, the alternative list, the first one talks about replace ceramic tile in restrooms.
Yes.
But on the first list, you talk about the resin embal. But on the first list, you talk about the resin embase in the restrooms.
So the first list is doing the floors.
Okay.
The second list is the ceramic oil tile.
Okay, okay, okay.
With the ceramic oil tile, we have to take all the toilet accessories down, all the plumbing fixtures down, replace the plumbing fixtures, which if we're going to take them down, we would probably put new in. Um, take toilet partitions down, put those back in. So it's, it's more than just taking tile down and putting.
Gotcha.
So we want to make sure we capture those costs for recognition.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Well, I motion to approve the list, I think that's called Adma SD Adscope. Is that the must-have list?
Yes.
With all of the ways Rick explained earlier. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thanks.
I'll second that. A- any more discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes.
So basically next month, they'll have a submission for SD. There'll be LFI MOU, which will include these dollar amounts. The board will have to approve the guests through SD on the two DDs, so I keep them. Did everything you need play?
No. So the approval that you're going to be talking about is going to be roughly, uh, just probably over a million dollars. Because of that swing space allowance, that's something for the team to try to get the state to.
Okay.
Julie, is that everything you need?
Yes, I just need that list and then we're gonna put it in the budget. Double check the numbers and then we'll, the LFI MOU is ready to be finished up and I can send it out in the next few days.
For the next board.
So you'll, so you'll have it ahead of time.
And the next board meeting's okay with the SD approvals?
As long as you have verbal.
Alright, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Alright. Request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters four thirteen. Southwest Looking Education Association. Approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the September nineteenth, twenty nineteen regular meeting minutes.
Motion approved six A.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Passes. We have financial report. We get a motion to approve and then discussion?
Motion to approve financial report.
Second. Alright, Mr. Jones?
Uh, including package, the executive summary for the end of September. I still don't have estimates in. I was hoping that meant just to get down to lay. The budget will be, asked to be approved for, and down the board, down in my section, so. Next month we'll have definite estimates. They'll be back as, you know, basically September. So we'll see exactly where we're at. They definitely were, for this month, it was really a routine month. Nothing out of the ordinary. Little bit of state money, payroll, nothing really exciting. You know, some of the significant expenditures were ESE deductions, community school deductions, enrollment, you know, loan subsidy, some stuff we don't have choice on, some things that just needs to happen, so. I ask the board to please approve the financial consensus present.
Any discussion or questions? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passed. We need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of employment of public employees.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are in executive session at nine thirty-three. Uh, yeah, Mrs. Perkins and.
Call to order from executive session at 10:09. Mr. Jones, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum. We can continue. We have, uh, let's see, we're on item nine, the personnel consent calendar. We have items A through E. I'm, uh, see, you have A through I?
I have A through I as well.
I have A through I. I have A.
Oh yeah, you're right. A through I. Sorry. I've been having weird things. Um, I'd like to make a motion to, to item E separately, please.
So your motion is all of the letters A through I except for E?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're requesting that E is accepted?
Yes, please.
Is that a motion or can I second the symbol of A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I?
Well, I guess you could just say vote A, yeah. It's not a white noise, yeah.
Okay.
Look at that, she got down, yeah.
Who, me?
No, Candy.
Yeah.
I'll se- so that's what we're doing?
A through I except E.
Uh huh, yeah.
Um, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
All right, and so now we have item nine E. Motion approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
No. Okay, that motion passes. All right, we've got item 10A, the school calendar. Do you just need a motion?
Need a motion to approve, yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. We want to just discuss that tonight?
Well, we've, um, we've gone through it quite a few times. The only thing that I would like to bring up, and it's down underneath the, uh, which is not on my computer, uh, so I'm going to repeat it off this one, um, is that, uh, give me just a second. That, uh, the only thing that I ask is we should keep in mind that negotiations may alter the number of workdays and our waiver days. Adjustments may need to be made to the calendar following, uh, that particular contract because they've not negotiated for the year 2021 yet. In order to maintain the construction timeline, the winter break for the four or five building and the end date for the 912 building should be, should not be altered. So again, I, I want to just make a note not to, to handcuff the negotiating team that is going to begin next year, but to try to keep those dates in place for the actual construction. Because if we change those, you're going to, it's going to cost the district money. Uh, but there may need to be some tweaks depending on what you guys are negotiating. But the calendar is the same one I presented to you like three months ago. We went to the union. They had really nothing to add. They were okay with everything. It just didn't get on the agenda last month, so I'm putting it on this month.
Okay. Any further discussion? Questions from the discussion now? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. We have, oh, this keeps rolling on me, sorry. We've got 11A, policy first readings. We need a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to really highlight real quickly again that we're just reinforcing and making sure that we know that we're into back of free campus on three of the policies, that it involves both staff, not both, but all staff, students, and visitors to our campus, and it includes now vaping, so that the wordage is in there. So we're just making sure that is known, and of course, this is the first reading for them.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. We do B and C together or do we need them separate?
Yeah, I was just going to say we're here to have public meeting, uh, to re- re- employment, if anybody wants to talk. Okay, move on.
Okay, can I motion to approve 11B and C?
Yeah, neither one needs approved.
Oh, okay, cool.
No, B is just, B is just if anybody wants to, their input on the higher end of.
Gotcha, sweet, moving on.
And the C is just informational.
Yep, just informational.
Action.
So really, we're in 12A and B.
All right, 12A and B. We have, um.
I meant motion to approve 12A.
All right, there we go, 12A and B. All right, and.
I will second that.
All right, and if Paula was here, she would tell us we needed both of those, so there we go. All right, any other discussion?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. 11, no, 13, oh my God, I can't, I need to wear my glasses. 13, A through D, chargers items.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second, okay. A through D, yes. You, you second that, and like five minutes later I'll go, second? Just randomly, a little slap happy.
I know.
Uh, it happens late, um, donations, obviously, we always appreciate those.
Yep.
Again, same purposes, funnel, they keep the trip on in. Um, C is depositary agreement with First Federal, is it First Federal?
First Federal, First Federal.
First Federal Bank, and this is for investment purposes only.
Okay.
They have some decent CD rates that our, our investment lines will look into as we look to buy new investments. See if it's worth it, but in order to do that, we just have to have a depositary agreement in place with them, so.
Okay.
It's for depository, it's for investment purposes only. And then D is basically the budget for the year. It's the administrative estimate resources and the appropriations for every fund. That's something we do every year. Um, the five-year forecast is not on here. How long will it change to five forecast? Does not need to be submitted until November 30th. So it's a way to after election in November to see if it passes. That affects some of the numbers where they're at in the five-year forecast, so that the November board meeting will have the five-year forecast to be approved. So I recommend approving all these. You have any specific questions about anything?
Guys, anybody?
Nope.
All right.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
That passes. Superintendent, item enrollment counts.
Yep, just, uh, real quickly, as you look at that, it's provided for you. Uh, we're actually down three kids, uh, this month, but again, we're balancing out. Uh, there may have been an expulsion or two in there too. They, they remain our kids, but they are no longer in the system. Couple things just to kind of continue to, to be in our favor. K1 and 2 all increased, students. Four, uh, 3, 4, and 5 all remain the same, so the upper grade levels may have been adjusted a little bit. So again, as the OFCC is looking at our enrollment, they're going to work and see how our younger grades are moving into the building, you know, because they're projected to be built and finished at those times. But also again, we're 319 seniors, uh, and we had 286 at the same time back in May, so they'll see that nice big increase too. So just, there's a lot of things in our, our favor when it comes to the enrollment, but again, trying to get OF, the OFCC to, to change is, is, is really hard. So I did not hear back from Steve Roca this week, so he'll be on my calendar to call next week and find out what he's learned and where it may be going. Um, I guess that's really it on question, I mean, I, I'm sorry, not for questions, but on the attendance, unless you have questions.
Big.
But we're still up 126 kids since, uh, for the start, for two months, so we're still way up there. The only thing that I will bring up now that may affect us, um, in the Aroma account is the fact that the city of Patasco put a moratorium on housing for six months. Uh, I don't know if the state will look at that and say, hey, that's going to give you time to maybe recover. I'm hoping they, uh, won't look at it that way.
I think just look at the townships. Those more than make up for it.
And that's only on new permits. I mean, that doesn't count, I mean, anything that's already in the works being built, so.
Which is a lot.
Which is a lot, yeah, in the works right now, so.
Yeah, you have the apartments on Watkins, you've got the refugee in 310, you've got a whole bunch of things already going, but some of that's outside the city, but some of it's inside of it.
Yeah, exactly.
But there's some giant numbers in there as you look at certain classes.
Yeah.
I mean, the senior class jumped by 35 kids.
Senior class?
Yeah, that seems like huge for 12th grade.
Well, again, when I say that, I'm looking at last year's seniors that are gone.
Oh.
And removing the junior class up, and then you look back at your kindergarten, and they're, and they're looking at whether or not there's a 15% increase or something like that.
Yeah, I was wrong.
So we'll have a much bigger graduating class this year.
Sixth grade is just huge.
It's 30, it's up 33.
I feel those like six something, they're helping.
Well, and third is also a big.
So that's, again, if there's questions, just look, make sure I keep you aware of those.
I think just graduation, are they going to be able to fit in the gym? That's what.
Well, I think there's, I think the municipal administration is really looking.
They're still looking at that right now, yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, it could happen this week.
For next year, okay.
Then after that, it shouldn't matter, right?
No, because we're smaller, the, the, yeah, we're not building a bigger gym.
Gym will be 2,000 seats.
Yeah.
Auditorium will be 800 or thereabouts. We're hopefully close to 800 right across the hallway.
So we'll still have to go offsite, be, really, based on, based on these giant Ganchoon classes.
So last year's graduation was pretty crowded.
Yeah.
And we got, and this year we have 35 more kids potentially.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you need a seat for me on the floor.
Anything for the homecoming mom?
We'll get you there first.
No, I just need a chair to watch the choir, that's all I need.
We'll, we'll let you get one first. We can hit reserved on yours, so. All right. How about request to speak on non-agenda items? Teamsters 413, no. Southwest Looking Education Association, nobody here, huh? All right, how about, uh, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. That was everybody. That was like.
Second.
That's awesome. All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 10:22 PM.
All right, I gotta clean up my mess.
Oh, I already put that in my mouth. I ate my rice first, but wait.